Calling the meeting to order. Continued business. You have commercial solar energy facility regulations. Consideration of ordinance to regulate commercial solar energy facility. And O'Connell made a motion to submit a memo to the select board to set fees to be on the agenda for October. Sponsored by, seconded by Curtis. Motion passed. For all aim to Curtis McConnell.
You don't need to read the minutes. We don't do minutes until number four.
But we continue on.
So the first item on your agenda is the continued business of the ordinance review. So what you have in your packet in available online has been the two copies of the cycling and review ordinance. One of them shows all of the markup for the proposed regulation of commercial solar. The other copy is the clean version with all proposed changes accepted into that document. So it's all black and white. There's none of that markup that makes it an easier read. So if there's no proposed changes by or the, the, the changes that you had accepted have been reviewed by the attorney and condensed into this document. So unless you have other changes, the next step for the ordinance review would be to move the ordinance over to the select board with your recommendation to adopt.
Okay, we don't have to move to accept it or approve it or anything.
You were going to move to accept it and, and move it to the select board. Yeah, if you don't have any other changes.
At the last meeting, weren't you supposed to get an idea what the other towns are charging for fees?
Yes, but at the last meeting, you also accepted that we were going to set that aside from the ordinance and consider that in the standard law memo that the list board is going to issue to the select board.
Okay.
That's the next item on your agenda. So we're going to move the ordinance and then we'll discuss fee structures or whatnot. And there's a survey in your packet from, I don't know, fifteen or twenty other towns, maybe. Been doing a lot of surveys. To look at what people, what other municipalities are charging and how they're basing their prices. So this is strictly the ordinance as it stands with proposed revisions related to commercial solar integrated into the site plan review.
So I like if I move that we, we accept the, uh, the updated site plan review ordinance, which includes, um, our solar energy facility regulations onto the select board for the review.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. So this is going to, uh, move on to the select board. Um, do, uh, Richard, do you have an idea what agenda that's going on?
It probably will appear on the November second agenda.
Okay, and, um, before we go for another vote, what happens if this doesn't pass at the select board?
Uh, customarily, the select board has put forward, uh, anything that the plan board offers for ordinance recommendations, they put to the people for a vote. I don't think that that would change. Uh, if there was substantial pushback from the select board, then, um, it would go to petition in order to get onto the board. But I, I candidly don't see that to be an issue.
What, I'm sorry, what don't you see to be an issue?
I don't see there to be an issue with the board presenting the proposed changes to the voters.
Okay, and so the voters will get this in the March elections?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, um, okay, I'm ready to vote.
All in favor?
No, oh, okay, go ahead, but it's gonna be a roll call.
It's gonna be voted on, all, all in favor?
It's gotta be a roll call vote.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Mike?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
Margaret?
I'm sorry, Margaret, I have a drawing a total blank.
It's okay, I'll help you there, John.
Oh, I appreciate that.
I got your back.
Margaret?
Yes.
John? Yes. You'll find out someday, Margaret, what it's like to get old.
Ah, thank you for acknowledging I'm not old yet. I kind of feel like after a day like today, let me tell you.
So the next item I slotted on the new business could be continued business is the discussion on your solar fee recommendation and issuing a memo to the select board. I drafted just a very brief memo that would be a fill in the blank at your pleasure, um, to send to the select board, um, for the recommendation. I think it's important that you make your recommendation and be voted on and forwarded to the select board for their consideration because I think it will impact a lot of folks' position on whether or not they want to support the proposed regulations. And so I think that's why it's important that we have this discussion now as opposed to wait and see if it passes or not.
So when you say, um, people, you mean the select board, right? Why we're presenting it to them?
Well, I think that, yeah, it goes together. If the voters are going to want to see, are we going to put a a fifty thousand dollar fee on a, on a solar development project? Or is it going to be a twenty five cent per square foot of panel? You know, I think there's a level of reasonability.
Yep.
In what folks intend. So that's why I think it's important we have that discussion now.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, can you just, uh, surrounding the fees?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, so just something that, why, I, I would just encourage the, the board here to, to think about when we're, when we're, when we're talking about the fees. So we had a public comment last meeting where, uh, I think the question was risen as to why we need fees or why we, why we having fees. So one of the things, again, so in, I guess from my perspective, you know, the, the town or municipality will charge fees, you know, to help cover some costs of things that we normally wouldn't do or just cover the cost of maintaining things. Um, sometimes there's fees for things and sometimes there's not. And then when there isn't a fee, sometimes when, when there's things going on within a municipality, you know, well, people will say, well, I pay, I pay my taxes, you know, and I pay my this, I pay my that. So that, so, all right, well, you may not have a fee to, to get a notary, but, you know, you pay taxes, so there you go. Um, for, so in general, these, these solar farms are the people that own them. From my perspective and from what I can see and what I understand, they're really not contributing to either at municipal level or even the state level, you know, financially. They're not paying any taxes.
Right.
Um, they don't have any vehicles, so they're not setting up a shop here, so they're not paying an excise tax. Um, they're not employing anybody, um, permanently. You know, there's nobody that hands the stations or things like that. I mean, I mean, one may even argue, are they even employing many people? From, to my knowledge, I've, you know, I've met a lot of people working on solar farms, but I have yet to met, I haven't met a mayor yet that works on a solar farm, so. Um, so I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is long-winded is that everybody, myself, businesses, we all pay something to, to play. Now, I think we even had a president that said, you need to pay your fish here, and you didn't build it because, you know, you didn't, you didn't build the roads and you didn't build the infrastructure. So it feels and it appears to me that, again, these solar farms are, they're really, uh, are, are giving, uh, a lot of flag, that we're at a free ride on things. So whatever our fee is, I think we just want to consider, we want them to be part of our community and part of our, our, you know, you know, the, the state and everything like that. Um, they should pay their share of, of things, whether it's, you know, to the municipal, mostly to, you know, to the municipality because we're the ones that are flag, that are dealing with that, so. And just, I just wanted to, to kind of verbalize that as to why, uh, why we should be charging fees at town. Again, I know it was brought up in public comment, and I think, in my opinion, that's, that's why we should charge a fee.
Uh, I totally agree. Um, I mean, when you look at our town, we have fees for building permits and plumbing permits and all those other permits. So this, the site plan review fee. How much is that now?
I tend, I think you're about a hundred dollars and then the square footage. I'll do that for commercial.
Yeah. Yes, it is what it is. So, uh, yeah, I agree with that.
So and then just as an addition, so we did, you know, as we, as our lawyer had mentioned, so we can't do a annual fee because that's considered an illegal tax. So, um, so I think that one of the fees, so, so as, as we're talking about, where if we can't do it annually, so the fee will probably have to be upfront. Looking at the list, I kind of like, I like Shapley's model. Again, it's based on a construction cost. Um, it looks like, I think it got cut off, but it looks like it's eight dollars per thousand. Um, so if you look at some of these, you know, and maybe it's too high, but if you look at, uh, I know, a couple of the projects, uh, I even think the one out on, on Upper Main, I think that was a four point seven million dollar project, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so four point seven million divided by a thousand uh, times, what'd they say? They paid, they're doing eight dollars. So that's thirty seven thousand six hundred dollars. And fee.
Wow.
Do we need, when we decide on a fee, on, Richard, um, would we get questions about what the town would use those fees for now that it's new income coming in?
Oh. It, it, it goes to the general fund necessarily. I think it's more about the justification of why the fee is set at what it is. So is it, is it administrative costs? Is it ongoing costs? Is it fire protection aspect, things like that?
Can you list all of those costs? Because those costs are realistic.
I, I mean, that's probably going to be in, uh, something that we add on to the memo. That, that's why, if you go in this direction, if that's the vote of the board to move in this direction, then it's going to be, this is not reason, unreasonable because we see costs of law enforcement, county tax, fire protection, local tax, things like that. Um, everybody else is shit, right, that everybody else is sharing. Um, and, and they are not. That would be your position, so to say.
If it goes into the general fund, would that not help to lower taxes?
Right, right.
People like hearing.
I think, yeah, I think we, Charlotte, you hit the, uh, nail on the head. I think if, if we institute a fee that we're all going to talk about, I think we make it very simple. The goal is to provide this income, which then in turn would affect, would lower taxes. I mean, I think that's realistic because it's covering costs that could raise taxes, so. And how, we need to keep it very simple.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, back to the, I'm sorry, back to the conversation about, so can we charge four hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So, so if for those, uh, what you're talking about, I mean, I think, so we're talking thirty thousand dollars. Um, thirty, what, what did you say? Thirty seven thousand dollars?
Yes, I just looking, looking at Shapley's, it got cut off, so I'm assuming it meant eight, it says eight dollars per, I'm assuming that meant per thousand.
It is.
So again, I, I, so don't quote me, I, I, one of our proj, one of the projects that we approved, I remember succinctly, but I just don't remember if it was Upper Main Street or, or Route Eight, it was four point seven million dollars. So four point seven million dollars, I guess, if you divide that by a thousand, that's forty seven hundred thousand, so forty seven hundred times, they are eight dollars, that's thirty seven thousand six hundred. If it was based on, again, construction cost. I'm, I'm not, I'm not advocating for eight, oh, I'm just, that was, that is the, that's what Shapley does and that's, that was an example. I think that's an easy one because if it's based on cost, so everybody will be treated the same, no matter if it's a four million dollar or a two million dollar. Um, and then, you know, the rate is the rate and just like you said, all that, that money goes into the general fund to help, uh, to pay the cost of town based on everyone, every, based on everybody else does it, so.
Do we know what the, um, River Road, uh, I mean, not, it may not be relevant, what the River Road solar farm, uh, costs?
If you continue your discussion, I can come up with that for you.
Okay, just to, it, it can give us a perspective of what a solar farm looks like and what we could have benefited off if we had this in place. So, so the land that we have in Norwich Walk on, and helping farmers, you know, on, with some, you know, subsidizing their income in some way, um, because prospectively, we could have multiple size uh, solar farms like that. And it's, and, and, and even though I've spoken negatively about that, you know, it's, it's a small farm comparable to other farms that are around our area because they're, I mean, Madison, uh, by that, uh, farm, um, name, uh, shit, what's that road?
Yeah, oh yeah, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's a huge farm and two oh one past Sappy, that's a huge farm. Um, that's going up. I think that's going up on both sides of the road. Um, out by the school there, so, you know. I foresee that we're going to have similar farms like what's on River Road.
So, so one other thing to consider too, so, so these solar farms, as we all know, they're, they, they're they're projected to last twenty five years.
Yeah.
They're, so, and again, from what we've seen, I think most, all the ones that we approved are all LLCs as well, so. Um, I think one could connect the dots and say, all right, so these farms will be in Norwich Walk for twenty five years. So if you, if we took it, and we're only going to be able to get this fee at one time because we can't do it every year. So thirty seven thousand dollars, if you divide that by twenty five, um, that's really not, so thirty seven six divided by twenty five years, so basically for the life of, of that they're going to be here, most likely, because again, that's all the, the panels are usually going to be good for and all that, that's fifteen hundred dollars a year.
Oh, shit.
That's nothing.
Um, so.
I swear to God, you and numbers. Talk about breaking that down.
Uh, the Norwich One River Road Solar's application under estimated cost of proposal said millions of dollars. Okay.
Wait a minute, millions? That was it?
That was it. So I also pulled the other solars, in December of twenty twenty, the application came for the Farren property. And at that time, and this is a year and a half ago, the proposal on an eleven point two acre project was four, seven, nine, five, six, three, seven.
What was that, yeah?
So four point eight million, and that's a year and a half ago.
Wow. Um, somewhere.
Thank you, Richard.
Yep, you're welcome.
It, um, also talks about, um, the decommissioning fees. Would that be included in our one application?
That has to be held in escrow now, and state law requires that to be on file, so I don't think.
And I think it's in our, I think it's in the site, that's in, that's part of this as well, too. Um, I remember reading, because I think what, the one thing we did change, we just said they can't have a line of credit, it's going to be a, like a surety bond or cash. And then the cash, yeah.
I like that, too.
Yeah.
At the seminar this past week, I attended the solar panel, big thing that they, they, the seminar they did. Um, there's been changes to that, um, what is it, LD nineteen eleven or some, whatever it is. There's been changes where they've made these solar farms, um, smaller. Okay? Um, I think what they talked about was now they're limiting, like his is three megawatt. I think they're limiting them to a two megawatt facility. Okay? Um, which in fact, most of the out of state companies that are coming in for these solar farms are leaving because these two megawatts are not big enough. So it's main base companies now stepping in, like Revision out of Brunswick and those kind of places.
That's a maximum, not a minimum.
That's a maximum for like his, where it's an out of state ownership. But where, like if the town in Norwich Walk decides to put one in, then we can put in whatever. Okay, like Farmington, that, I believe Farmington's the biggest in the state. Um, and that's stretched it for over a mile. Okay?
Is it, is that, do you know that for, is that for true fact? Wait, is it, so it is the law now, is that?
That's what they were talking about at that seminar. Okay? And they also discussed this, um, decommissioning. What the company that installs them, Revision, which is main base out of Brunswick, explained most of the stuff that's, almost everything that's in a solar farm is recyclable, the metal, the glass, everything, the fans, you name it. Okay, so these astronomical fees they're, they're leveling are just kind of odd. Um, because they're like a hundred and fifty percent, you know.
Wait, what was this? Where did you go?
Um, to the seminar, the Maine Municipal Association Seminar, it was a two day thing in Bangor.
On, on, on what was the subject?
Um, it was basically everything that the Maine Municipal Association covers, all vendors.
Okay.
Um, all the vendors, we, both me and Richard, attended a class on, uh, a seminar on PFAS, which is coming up.
Yeah.
Um, Richard attended several of them. Mine was more towards what I'm dealing with, you know, in the planning board, the sewer commission, those kind of things. Um, and they were, it's an hour long class of what the future holds. Okay? Um, and how they're actually promoting more and more municipalities to step in and own these solar farms rather, because that's where the solar farms get cheaper is when they're privately or municipal, municipality owned. Okay, you talk, what is it, fifteen, sixteen cents per, um, kilowatt or something like that, that they're making? Well, when the municipality owns it, it gets down to like eight cents per kilowatt.
I don't want to overstep the chair, but if you will. I think we're going down a little rabbit hole.
Right.
Talking about fees.
Yes.
So if we could refocus on fees, and we have to be very cautious while we're developing regulation, speculating about what could be future regulation.
Right.
I'm not finding any piece of legislation affecting solar since the one that became effective in twenty twenty one about solar decommission. So I think it's probably best if we just get back on the fees itself and the, the basis for the fees rather than what may or may not happen.
As far as, as fees go, I'm more towards leaning towards like Canaan or, or some of the lower ones encouraging people to come in. Um, Canaan's one of the towns where they're putting up solar farms.
Is there a motion on the table? Should we get, should we first do a motion on the table and then we can discuss, Mike?
That might help focus the conversation.
Mike, do you want to make a motion?
How can we make a motion without having an amount?
He's going to, he would put one in a motion, and then you're going to debate strictly that motion.
And then, and then, John, you can, you, what you're saying can be part of the discussion.
So I'll make a motion that we recommend as part of our letter to the, to the select board, uh, solar fee recommendations. So I recommend that we, uh, we put onto that letter, um, that we base the solar fees for new solar construction based on the Shapley model, which is eight dollars per thousand of cost of project.
I second it.
Okay. On the.
So now we can, now we can discuss that.
Um, I do have a question. In Florence, they have a decommissioning fee of a hundred and fifty percent of final total project cost. Does that mean that if they paid fourth million dollars to put it up, they would have to put six million in an escrow?
Yeah.
Wow.
A lot of these towns go wrong.
I feel like a lot of them are going to come to me because we have a sparse population and a lot of land.
Yeah.
And I think they'll come here.
I agree, Charlotte.
So, to, to further discussion on the, on, on the fees, so like, as I mentioned before, again, they, these companies, you know, and they, they, they're not contributing to the local towns. So I'm, I, I guess, I'm just, to me, I think it's our, it's our duty to, you know, to protect the citizens and to, you know, say, hey, you've got to, you've got to do your part if you're in our community. You know, that's, I, and, you know, and, and that might sound like a lot, thirty, you know, eight dollars or thirty something thousand upfront, but again, they're going to be here for twenty five years. Um, and then again, they're, they're not paying any tax, anything.
Or they're getting half that back to the state.
Um, so like I said, but the companies themselves are not paying anything. Um, the, the companies that own these solar farms, so again, it's not a matter of going after them, it's just like, you know, and other businesses and other things, they've got to pay their way. Um, and again, I'm not sure, other than, you know, other than the, the, the green agenda, that I'm not sure the value that they bring. Again, they're, they're not creating a job, they're, they're not, they're not, there's nothing, there's nothing that they're, they're really doing. And again, um, so, I, I don't know why we're everywhere trying to encourage it, so.
Um, so, um, as part of your motion, uh, you said you wanted to base it on the Shapley example, uh, at eight dollars per thousand. I agree that that sounds pretty good.
John, do you have anything regarding the fees that you were talking about to be part of the discussion?
Well, when looking at fees, I think you want to look at whether or not these towns are imposing large fees to prevent solar farms from coming in. I mean, I know Canaan has put in solar farms, I know Saco has put in solar farms. Okay, and their fees are fairly reasonable.
Yeah, but quite frankly, it's, you know, my focus is about Norwich Walk and the planning board and, you know, and I, um, you know, I feel strongly that the motion on the table is reasonable.
I do, too.
And it's, you know.
Because Mike's right, we're not going to get any other benefit from this.
We have a lot of land in Norwich Walk.
Yes.
I think there's a misconception about, um, the, you know, a misconception to, uh, people within our town about, um, how these fees could potentially, um, create a barrier for a farmer not to, you know, that it would be cost too much. Um, and, uh, potential companies will be swayed, uh, uh, you know, away from us. But we have really good land here and I'm not concerned that Canaan, Farmington, Mercer, wherever, would be a competition, um, at all. I'm not concerned about that. Because their fees or they, or whatever, you know. Uh, but that's my, my opinion.
If they have, excuse me, millions of dollars to put this in place to begin with, then surely they have enough to pay an application fee one time.
That's, you know, that's one of the things that we consistently have said, Charlotte, throughout all of our meetings, is that there is too much sensitivity around these fees and these companies that are coming in. Companies are coming in, are way, 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 and they are the major benefit, beneficiary of these solar panels, because a small amount of money is going to our farmers or our landowners while they are benefiting a, a huge amount of money.
So, just, just to get, but, to give you another perspective about this fee, and, so, yeah. It's, so let's say, let's use the Upper Main Street, for example, so that was four point eight million dollars. Okay, so you divide that by a thousand, does this per thousand? Again, by eight dollars, so that's thirty eight thousand, four hundred dollars. And then you divide that by the cost of the project, what, okay? That's point, that's point eight percent, so that's not even one percent of the total project cost. You're asking for a fee. Not even one percent of a project cost in a fee. I think that's extremely reasonable.
So how do we move forward? Now that we're in discussion, do we take a vote?
I guess it is time to call for a vote.
The chair is called for a vote.
John?
Uh, sorry, I'm in the process of looking something up, but, um, does anybody know whether, um, Sharply actually has any solar farms?
I don't know.
No, I don't know.
Because I'm not pulling up anything sharply.
I'm not sure why that's relevant.
No, me either.
So, we're, we're ready to vote, I'm not sure, you know, we have, whether Sharply has a farm or not, we have a uh, a motion on the table.
Margaret?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
John? No.
Thank you very much.
Okay, it's, um, three to one. And, uh, the motion passed. Okay. What's next?
I move that to accept the minutes as written from September eighth, twenty twenty two.
I second.
Let me know when you're ready, Charlotte.
Okay. Okay.
Margaret?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
John? Yes. Is there anything else?
So, the, yes, Miss Shire, just one other thing, so I know on the, on the agenda, it says our next regular meeting is November ten, twenty twenty two. So I will be unable to attend that, both in person and remotely, um, so I'm not sure. Can you still have a meeting with three? Like, I was looking at Richard.
You can.
I don't think we'll have a quorum if you don't attend.
No.
So, I think we should, I, I propose that we alter, we, we, you know what, Mike, didn't we discuss that the last meeting? Like, we would need to re, um, reschedule that, I think, I thought, or maybe it was this meeting, I don't know.
I'm okay with rescheduling.
So I'm unable to attend the next meeting as well?
Yeah, this, we had, this is a deja vu, uh, conversation.
Yeah, probably, uh, my recommendation would be to cancel your November meeting unless there's time sensitive business at hand. Uh, which I'm not expecting, and then your next regular meeting would then be December the eighth. And please plan on that as a firm date, I am expecting the application from Waste Management regarding the proposed modifications to their transfer station, back entrance on airport. It is in the same vicinity, it's going, going to be bigger, it does have a minimal impact, um, in terms of wetland, and they've got it all mapped out, but they have indicated their intention to get that to the Planning Board for December.
Is there, is there a reason why we can't reschedule for later in the month of November?
We could, we're gonna run into holidays, all.
That's right.
Yeah, but freaking, freaking December, we're running into holidays.
Right, but I, I thought the eighth might be an all right thing, Thursday, the eighth, and then would be done until after the first of the year.
Okay, I just, the, I'm just thinking about our previous conversation, Richard, about about holidays, uh, and making sure that we, because I don't know if we're gonna get held up with the Select Board, but the goal is to get this on the, um, ballot, and time's gonna fly fast.
If, if, if there's an issue with this solar, proposed solar regulation, we will need to get you guys back together. And that will need to happen in November.
I recommend that we reschedule if possible, or reschedule it later this month, I don't give a crap, but I just wanna get this approved to forward it on and not wait to December, that's my recommendation.
Okay, so.
Well, this will go on the Selectment agenda for next Wednesday?
No, it's not going, and we won't have time, we'll be at three hour time at the next Select Board meeting. So, rest up, so that's, for the sake of time, I would put it on the November second agenda. And then, if there's an issue, which you get, I honestly don't foresee that it'd be an issue with the proposed regulation. It may be an issue with your fee proposal, but I don't think that there'll be an issue with the, uh, regulation itself.
So if there is an issue with the fee proposal, Richard, does that mean they just send it back to us and we revise it?
No, ultimately, you're issuing a recommendation, and they can accept that or not.
The fee structure.
Correct, because, yeah, because based on what our, the attorney said, the fee structure all goes through Select Board, we can only recommend.
That's correct, so your recommendation is gonna stand, I don't see, I don't think it's really a process for negotiation on the fees. It's a public document after this meeting that says, this is what the Planning Board's recommending, and the Select Board can either do or don't.
Margaret, what, what was your motion?
I, it wasn't a motion, I wanna reschedule.
She wants to make sure that we're not missing anything.
Well, um.
If anything drops with the solar ordinance, I'll contact John, and we'll get something on the books.
Can I make a motion to cancel the November meeting due to a lack of business? Unless something comes up that we need to tend to. Does that sound?
The, the, I could possibly do the seventeenth, I, I said that, I will, I will not even be in a cell area on the tenth. By, by November, on the seventeen, I, I should be at some place, I could possibly be remotely on September, September, on the seventeen.
Right.
I, I'm sorry, I, I, I must be extremely confused. So, Richard, what we're, uh, what we did tonight will be presented to the board, the Select Board on November second?
Yes.
Okay, then I don't give a shit about, about November, so thank you, Charlotte, for dumbing that down for me, thank you. It's been, it's been a long day, I'm sorry.
So the next regular meeting of the Planning Board will be held on December eighth, barring any pressing business.
Okay, do we need a motion on that?
Yes, I'm, I motion.
Okay.
And, and Charlotte, can you?
And I'll say, can I put one?
Can you put into the minutes that I formally apologize for my tired mind, wasting all the Planning Board time?
No.
God, that was painful.
To move the or cancel the November meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So we have to call for a roll call, Charlotte?
Yeah, we will, but John has to do that.
Margaret?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
John? Yes. Make a motion to.
I just have one more question, so you have discussed the fee proposal, and you have the draft memo in your packet. Uh, do you want me to expand on the discussion that you had here in that memo? Or will it be a member that wants to show up? Because other than that output that is based on construction cost, one of my notes here say, the bulk of tax revenue coming from the state, not from the owner being a part of the community, and less than one percent of project cost is a fee. Are we fine with me including that in the memo?
I am.
And then I will put, it says that it's only adopted by majority, it's not a unanimous adoption.
Right.
And, uh, yeah, I'm fine with that, and, um, yeah, I'm fine with that.
So I'll revise the draft and send it up to you before I include it in your packets.
And, um, before we adjourn, I do have other business, so, John.
Okay. Um, other business?
Richard, can you give us an update on any people who are breaking down your door to be part of our lovely Planning Board Committee?
Yes, in fact, I do, I have a gentleman in attendance tonight in the audience, Charles Farren, who was expressing interest, and I think he was in the process of filling out a volunteer application. And if that is the case, then there will be an agenda item on next Wednesday's Select Board uh, meeting to appoint vacancy, we're also looking for an appointment to the Sewer Commission, if anybody's interested.
Oh, God. Solar and sewer, that's, that's exciting.
Oh, yeah. I was on the Sewer Commission. Were you two, Mike?
Yeah.
This is my, this is my first. I enjoy it.
Was that it, Margaret?
That's it, thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
Margaret?
I, I, I second.
Yes.
Charlotte?
Uh, yes.
John? Yes. Margaret?
Yes. Thank you, Richard, for the paperwork again.
We'll see you later.
Bye, Margaret.
Bye, peace out.